Yeah, no worries.
Let's go to the other side.
Yeah.
I hope she does.
That's, that's true.
Yep.
That camera works.
Yeah, that is nice.
Yeah. 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 You've been right.
Nothing.
Open that dog.
Who knows what we're watching.
Yeah.
Yeah, this copyright is very important. I mean, I said you can get a lot.
I can't understand. We gotta deal with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They drink so early in the morning.
I can't see much. I'm just gonna have one.
Yeah.
I have some kids.
I'll watch. I'll go watch. I'll rest my table.
Man, I was so much out.
Seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and call a word, please. Everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any roll call, please?
Councilmember Vader.
Present.
Councilmember Hicks.
Present.
Councilmember Fry.
Present.
Councilmember Alamon.
Here.
Councilmember Lauer.
Present.
Mayor Porton Farmer. Mayor Householder.
Present. Next one is approval of agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Alright, fair enough.
Any discussion? All in favor? Move to it.
Is it possible to add something under unfinished business number A?
Or is it if you want to have them amend your motion?
Yeah, yes. I want to add your motion. So what am I adding there? I want to add discussion of the number of dispensaries allowed in Bangor for the first change of the law. Okay. I'd like to amend my motion to include under unfinished business number A to include the discussion to allow the number of dispensaries in Bangor at the first law change.
Now, has the second been amended to match it?
Yes. I second the amended motion.
Any more discussion? Alright. We got it. All in favor to the amended agenda?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. So our next one is approval of the city minutes from regular meeting 10-16-2017.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting 10-6-2017.
Support. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now, the next one is approval of accounts payable and payroll.
Okay, we have two pass-through sheets here. One is for last month that we somehow missed. And it is 13914 for the joint fire board. City of Bangor, 205939. Van Buren County Treasurer, 1,29325 for a total of 3,49178. I make motion we approve that.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
The second pass-through is from 10-14 to 10-20-17. Joint Fire Board, $99.66. City of Bangor, $1,473.04. Van Buren County Treasurer, $926.41. For a grand total of 24, $2,499.11. I make motion we approve that amount.
For a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Can we get a roll call, please?
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. Next one?
Okay, the next one is for roads. Crown Escavating, $14,461.50. Michigan Paving and Materials Company for asphalt, $337.44. Morton Salt, that's a half salt delivery, for $2,404.27. Perceptive Service and Operations, $1,319.36. For a total of $18,522.57. I make the motion that we approve that amount.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Now, the Crown Escavate, is that part of the dip of the fire department or which one?
10,000 of it is. The 3950 is for the cemetery entrance and then 51150 is for the concrete in the parking lot over here. So just 10,000 of that is for the dip.
Okay. Now, the alley behind the chiropractor, 511, is that we charge back DDA or is that to the city or?
That's the cities. Yeah.
Part of the DDA project, currently?
Um, not particularly, no. It's more on the city side, you know, where the city lot kind runs.
Okay. So. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes.
Okay, November insurance from general checking, two. Delta Dental of Michigan, $659.34. Priority Health, $3,878.75. Standard Insurance Company, $90.27. Verizon service plan, $172.44. For a total of $4,880.
Are you sure that's Verizon?
Yeah. Very.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna get out of here and play.
Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Lauer.
No comments?
Householder.
Yes.
Okay, general checking, uh, two. Total of all claims is $36,233.05. Payroll for week ending 10-15, $18,568.34. Payroll ending 10-29-17, $16,922.86. And there was five checks written between meetings for a total of $19,778. With a grand total of $91,502.25. I make motion we approve these claims.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. What does it, uh, what does it mean? State by insurance coins from machines and evidence? And we're paying, what are we paying for?
That, that was, those were coins that were at the laundromat.
Okay.
And we ran them through a coin machine, right Tommy? And put them in the bank and then cut a check.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, what happened to the cage on 51?
Um, that got damaged when the prisoner escaped from the back of the.
Now, will we get retribution or reimbursement for that?
I have no idea. It was, it was just an.
He'd probably go to prison for it.
Get some retribution.
I don't think we're getting anything back.
What was the unit eight work, technicals? What is, what is unit eight first of all? Is that the?
George's pickup.
Okay, for pickup?
Oh, I see. Yeah, that, that one needed some, I think it was brakes and on the front end.
Shocks doing everything.
Which has been that one.
The side room set, is that for the sweeper?
The street sweeper, yes.
And I take it the check for the police radios that goes back to the loan you took out? For the $18,230?
Oh, that's what that is, yeah. That is the loan.
You pay on the radio sometimes?
That's the whole thing, yeah. Somehow we got the loan and we didn't make the payment. And we realized we didn't make the payment.
They didn't send you invoice.
Yeah, they never invoiced us, so.
I say, how do you get to do that?
When we realized it, we contacted them.
Any more discussions, anybody? Roll call please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes.
Motion approved. At this point, um, there's no more accounts payable and payroll after that period of time. Other regular business resolutions, proclamations, reports, presentations, none at this time. At this point, we're open for after the comments. Please keep comments in three minutes. Go ahead.
City manager, did they shut the door on Jerry's garage? It was open this morning.
It got reported, so I'm not sure if it got shut or not. There is nothing in the building and there's a broken window you can get in, so. Did they shut the door?
We, we've been shutting it. I don't know what's going on with it. We were gonna actually put a work order in tomorrow and see if public works had put a board up there.
Why it opened this morning?
Somebody's probably sleeping.
Somebody's in there. Door is sleep-changing position as they come back and forth to work. Somebody's going in and out of there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to invite anybody to, on Thursday morning at 8:30 in the morning, Bangor High School has a Veterans Day ceremony. So if any veterans are here or if you guys just want to come out and see the veterans and, you know, thank them for their service to Bangor High School at 8:30.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, moving down the list. Next one is unfinished business, dispensaries in Bangor. Councilmember Dan Fry, did I talk?
Yes. Um, in going over all of our paperwork and our package stuff, I noticed that, uh, well, in talking to Regina at our last meeting that we had for the, um, was the meeting you had last week where the people all came and made a presentation?
EDC.
Was it the planning commission or EDC?
What is it?
Was it planning commission or EDC?
Yeah, planning commission.
That was a planning.
Yeah, we had a lot of people that were making offerings to wanting to start the dispensary in town. And in looking this whole thing over, we've had, uh, three and four people that came and really put down their life on the line to work in industrial park and start operations out there. So in, in reviewing that, I think as a, as a city, it would be behoove us to stick with them. They're working together and would like to start a dispensary downtown. But I think we need to start it with, maybe make an amendment to our ordinance as to limit it to one at this point, so we don't become Otzville, USA in everybody's mind. I've already talked to Mark Smith as far as putting out maybe a couple of town hall meetings to inform the people in Bangor what's going on, so if they've got questions, they can maybe come to the fire hall for a couple of different nights and listen to what's going on and have a presentation just like we did on the EDC. And put people's mind at ease as to, you know, no, it's not going to be a head shop. It's actually going to be a spa-like atmosphere. And I think it would be only fair that we take care of the people that we've got coming here to do business as opposed to a lot of other people that we have no idea where they're going to take the money. What are they going to be, what are they going to be concerned with? And I just heard on the radio that there has to be a certain amount of money they have to have invested to do it with the state.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not just a free-for-all and everybody can open it up everywhere, but, uh, I, I think it would be whoof us to look into that and get with sterling as, as to what we have to do is to limit it to only one at this point. If it takes off and it's good and it's good for everybody, then I have no problem with opening it up maybe to two or whatever, one step at a time. Don't just run with it with the bottle up in the air. That's what I got to say.
I, I really think all of them would be case by case. So if we get one, we want to take a one, we just take a one, we're gonna go to two, we go to two, or we go to three, whatever.
Timing is everything.
Timing is everything certain now.
I still think we have to have it in our ordinance to have some type of limit to start with, though, because I, I don't think we can, can we just broadly say we'll do it case by case or?
No, it has to be, you have to.
Right. I, I would think that we would do it, and I mean, I mean, I, I agree with Danny with the fact that, um, you know, we need to take care of folks that are starting a business out here because they're investing in the community and we're investing in them, so. But I don't want a free fall out here where we have 10 dispensaries down there. We don't want to be known as Bangor, the city, hey, just go there and get your drugs and hang out. But, um, you know, I'd like to see a limit to it also, so, um.
Yeah.
I think that'd be just added to the ordinance? Or do we have to do a completely different ordinance?
It would be just an amendment.
Just an amendment.
Now, if you need to special your word of open, it'll subdue before the planning commissioner.
Maybe you have to go before the planning commissioner.
And the planning decisions still will go before the city council, or the council chooses?
Yeah, I don't want to fill the town up with dispensaries and I think that we do should patronize people that are doing business in our industrial park. I would like to see more than one. I don't, I, only for the reason that for some unknown reason, somebody doesn't like somebody in one dispensary, they'd have a second choice. Other than that, I don't see the need for any more than two, especially as smaller communities we are.
Kind of neat and unique that the three guys that are talking about starting out there want to work together where they could all work under one dispensary. So you wouldn't have it coming from all parts of the state coming into Bangor. It's just what's grown locally and what's going to be processed locally and what's going to be sold locally, whether it be oils or whatever. That's why I'm saying, let's get running with one and then possibly go to two at some point. But I don't want to start out with two, three, or four, or five, because we're cutting this guy's legs off. And there's hundreds of millions of dollars to, to start out here.
I think, you know, I think that's reasonable to start out with one and we'll see how that works out.
Right, exactly.
And, uh, then we can revisit this later if we see a need for another one.
Now, even if we do sue to pass this, can they still go before the planning commission? And then we can make.
That meeting is the 16th, so there's no way that we have an amendment done by them. Because there's a process to an amendment as well, so.
That has to be in the paper and everything else.
And like I said, right away, if there's two or three applying, doesn't necessarily we got to take two or three or whatever.
Right, right.
Well, the ordinance we passed allows dispensaries in town. It just doesn't limit the number.
It doesn't limit any of the.
So if we don't approve more than one, how are we violating that?
You can limit it yourself.
What you're telling us, we should probably have a limit per the ordinance?
If you want to amend the ordinance, you could do that.
And what's the current ordinance we're talking about? Have you specified the numbers?
We did not, no. I think it's two, number 284, and there's no limit. There's no numbers mentioned at all.
So to put a limit on it, do we have to make a motion now to do that?
The problem I think we're run to is timing before the.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking before the very next meeting for us to make an amendment to the ordinance. When we start doing that?
Actually, at this point, the planning commission is in their hands, so. And I would convey the message that we would like only one to start with. And we'll go from there.
Yeah, I, I think we can run with it right now, then we go back, then we can request change of the ordinance, then we have another public hearing.
Right.
Then we can change it.
Could we start that?
Uh, what is going to appear with the current ordinance? The problem is the current ordinance has been public hearing.
Is open and it's still.
Yeah.
Ours to say A or N.
If they wanted to do that, we'd have to do just first reading, the second reading, like we do with the regular ordinance, so it's the process. Or the quickest you could get through it, I feel, most.
Yeah, both of those. And, and really, I think the, the planning commission, they don't have to issue all three, they can still only stuck with one right now and then mostly, obviously, they have to get the, the okay from the headquarters first before they contact you to the council.
So we're still the final side?
Yes.
There isn't. I don't believe there's going to be any local marijuana for at least six months. I don't know when it takes the drilling. Go ahead.
The facility that we're hoping to build, um, you know, the site plants are in, um, we're looking at five months just to put the facility up. It's 12-week lead time just for us to get the steel. And we can't even order the steel until we, you know, have the deal done. So, um, you know, you're looking that period of time. There is a little bit of wiggle room there that if we, once we own the property, we're thinking that we would put a container out there to start the smaller, uh, production while the plant is getting built. That would cut the lead time down to about two months. But you're still looking, um, four months after the building is up and running. So typically a seed to sale is six months. If you want to give a good guidelines, by the time you put a seed in the ground to the time you would harvest your first harvest, you're looking at six months. So, um, but what they've done, um, in the, in Lansing is they've made an approval to allow the dispensaries that are open today to run concurrently until the licensing scenes are given. So they're making that legal to do that, so.
They're saying they can open.
Our, our proposal would be that certainly we're, we're wanting to make a bid on some land that you, or a building that you, you folks own and we want, we want to make an offer on that land, um, or that building. And seeing as they just changed that structure, um, we'd like to get that going as soon as we could to get that up and running and see how all that works, so. But that would still be based on whether or not you guys do an approval on our special use permit and getting all that rolling. So, um, we, legally, we could start operating, um, after we purchased the building and supply those goods through the caregiver system. Am I not still correct? So, you know, that would give us an opportunity to start that funding and getting that rolling and get that building up and running. But that's kind of what we're looking at, uh, five months to have the building up. We hired Crohn's to do our excavating. We just met with them before this meeting, uh, so he's like, when can I start? Well, as soon as the city hands us a deed, we're likely to start. So, uh, we're, we're hoping to get Crohn's busy working on that and bringing in the sand and doing everything we need to do to get that, that land excavated. Um, so we're ready to go.
Yeah, to start seedlings in a container, isn't that kind of a security problem?
Well, we would secure it, uh, just like we would anything else. We would have security cameras fencing, we would fence it off, we, we would take care of it like we would any, any other place. The, the production of starting seedlings, uh, in a container is a very low energy. You know, you're just using regular lights and, and that would give us a little head start to be able to, um, get those, uh, that production in while we're building the plant. And that would still be three months into building the plant. We wouldn't start those until the plant was three months into build anyway. But that would, that would cut that lead time by about two months, so.
What type of building? Talking like a seed container or some other type of building?
Um, we're talking about just a regular container like you would see on a train. Yeah, yeah, seed container. Yeah, just put, put some lights in a generator and fence it off and secure it and, uh, start, start the seed, seeds that way. So seeds are easy to start. They pop easy, uh, they grow fairly easy. And that would, we're, we're hoping that would cut our production time by two months.
And everything's clearly said video camera, security.
Yeah, everything, everything that the building would have, this container would have. We wouldn't, we wouldn't cheat the system in any way.
Okay, and you're saying that you could open the dispensary here tomorrow?
Um, if you approved our bid and we could get in there for a couple of weeks and get it painted and the floor in and everything we want to do to the, the property that we've been looking at, uh, yes.
Where would you get the product?
The product would come from the caregivers, uh, like myself, that already are growing and other carriers that you're allowed to buy it from. Like the dispensaries that are open today. And, uh, that is just something that came across here recently with the Alara group, that they're gonna allow that. Their, their theory behind that series is that there's so many patients that are depending on that medicine. If they cut it off December 15th, they'll have nowhere to go to get that. And the sooner that they can get those folks staying with the program, um, and let it run concurrently, it'll be a smoother transition into a factory like ours that are going to grow it and be able to, um, um, track it right into those dispensaries. So that's, that's their thinking behind that. They were gonna have a December 15th cutoff, uh, but they changed that just here recently. And it's in print, it's in an advisory notice, uh, out on the website. We certainly would have to have your approval. Uh, it goes with that, uh, we have to have a, uh, an approval from you that you said, yeah, we're okay with that. But yes, we could. And we would like to.
Okay. I guess I need to talk with you before the next planning commission meeting so that I know what kind of presentation is necessary.
Okay, sir. Anything we can do to help.
Any other questions, comments by the council members on this?
How many people are you looking to employ for?
We have a three-year plan that we submitted to, uh, from the very beginning. I think I'm probably one of the few that actually gave a whole plan. And our three-year plan is to build 30,000 square foot and employ anywhere from 25 to 30 employees at the end of the three years.
Regina does have the plan. Like you said, they're doing it kind of proprietary where other competitors can just come in and see your plan and make up a.
Ours is a 1.3 million dollar project. Probably going to run a little more than that, but that's where we're at right now, but.
Any other questions, comments?
So you're really advising us to wait till after the next meeting that you guys have to do something with our ordinance?
Absolutely, yes. Because it's ready and it works right now.
Right.
That we do any different, it's gonna be postponed again and it won't hit the timing in November.
Yeah, one more question.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm just curious. The next meeting on the 16th, um, would the special use permits be granted?
The recommendation would be either yes or no, and then on the 20th, the council would then just make the final determination.
Thank you. Because that would, that would be what we would tell Crohn's.
From what I saw, I believe that this month, the special use permits will be approved.
Any other public comments? We're in public comments.
We're in public comments.
Oh, my fault. Yeah, I'm sorry. Spencer, anymore?
No, no, I, I was, after talking to.
Someone around, he was talking in public comments, I kind of backed, backed to public comments.
After asking Sterling, I, I'm satisfied.
Move down the list is, uh, new business, uh, file. Foya coordinator?
Foya coordinator. Um, we had appointed Sterling Foya coordinator in the past and that's because Laura was brand new. And now that Laura's been here a while, we think it would make sense to make her the Foya coordinator because she is here and the clerk is usually the keeper of the documents anyway. And, uh, that would work better because I know Sterling. Yeah, it'd be hard to. So anyway, that's, that's what I would like is to recommend is that we make Laura the.
I'll make a motion to appoint Laura as the Foya coordinator to the city of.
Any more discussion on it?
You got a lot of support there, isn't it?
Let's go and do a roll call on it, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hips?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Hustler?
Yes. Uh, the next one is, uh, the fee schedule and permit for water and sewer tap.
Our, um, fees are from probably the late sixties. Haven't really done anything. I did call around to some communities. These are our old, um, applications and they look like they were typewritten. So we really should, and I'm, I'm working on a document now that looks a little more modern with the logo on it. But I was checking with some surrounding communities about their, um, tap fees. And I've got Hartford's in your packet and Lawrence's. And Lawrence does have an application fee of three hundred dollars if they add to that. South Havens are outrageous, I think. And then I did get ahold of Hartford and they do use a formula and I'm thinking it must be similar to what South Haven does. I don't think we want to do that, but they did do a, a tap fee for a gas station with seventeen hundred, but then the McDonald's was three thousand because they did use. A formula for that one. Water believe uses, um, and that's not in your packet, they use a flat fee. But theirs is two thousand dollars. It doesn't matter if you're inside the city limits, outside the city limits, it's a commercial and residential, it doesn't matter. The tap fee is two thousand for sewer, two thousand for water. And then the inspection fees seem to be pretty, um, consistent throughout as a fifty dollar inspection fee. So I don't think we need to make a decision tonight, but we do need to think about updating our fee schedule. And of course, these, um, permits for the grow facilities, all those won't be approved until the twentieth anyway, but we need to be looking at what is fair. We got the ordinance book out and sewer tap and, and there is sixty bucks. So.
That's a witcher?
That's where you haven't done it, you know, you haven't needed it, but that's what yours are. That's how far behind and I think those, those are from the late sixties, so.
That's.
We, we need to look at something that's fair, but not outrageous. And then, of course, the businesses pay for the meter, the time and materials. So.
Just like, what we do for water tap is like.
It's just to.
Same sixty?
Well, that's, yeah, it was sixty, um. So we, we just need to give it some thought and come up with something that's fair, not outrageous, like the example in here from South Haven. Seventeen thousand, three hundred million dollars to get hooked up the sewer and water.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
And that is a lot of. Yeah, that's different, so, um.
Well, I think right now the city, we would encourage people want to tap into our waters.
We don't want to be running them very small.
Yeah, I think seventeen thousand people would say forget it, so. So we could take all the different amounts and kind of average them out to a little bit different. I could challenge more communities too.
I would really like to, like you did before, prepare with Hartford and Lawrence, cities our size.
Yeah.
Our, our type of.
Well, seeing when I talked to Lawrence, he hasn't done anything in a long time either.
Yeah.
And theirs were the three hundred, I think, and five hundred.
Yeah, they're three fifty and six hundred.
And they have had no growth. So I think that's what happens is when nothing goes on, those rates just sit there.
Well, we're someone who's trying to make the end bill on those. Cause they, they got pretty sorry though, cause they're, I mean, sorry.
Yeah, water at least two thousand. Yeah, so then Bill, are there any more you'd like me to check? Anyone can think of any?
I would look at Decatur and Lawton.
Gobles?
And Gobles, yeah. Cause guys, one thing I don't want to do is, is discourage people from actually hooking up to our water and sewer too. We want as many people as possible.
What about Bloomingdale's?
Bloomingdale's has water. Gobles doesn't have sewer.
We still want, we, we still, we still, we still want to encourage roads to the city. I mean, I think we look what we have now is very non-existent, very small.
They just use subtricks?
What's that?
Oh, I was asking if Gobles just use subtricks because they don't have sewer.
Yes.
So they just use subtricks.
So I haven't encouraged many people to want to go homes in town.
Okay, I'll check on.
What you gotta realize is that's an inspection fee for somebody to go out and inspect when somebody's done in town. That's not the hookup fees.
Right.
The sixty dollars is the inspection fee?
Well, there's a separate inspection.
That's for Jimmy to go out and look. Yes, you made your connection to the city water system, that's correct.
But we're not, so we're not charging anything for the actual connection?
No, that's an inspection. That's make sure it was done legal and right.
Yeah, there's an inspection fee, a tap fee. Some places charge an application fee.
Right, but we're, we're worldly charging an inspection fee from what I'm understanding, just sixty dollars.
Just for the inspection.
Right.
And everything else is time and material.
But the tap fee, we're not, what are we charging for that?
Who, who's paying the tie-in to our city water and city sewer?
The customer.
The customer is ready. So they're gonna pay a normal fee besides that. Now we're looking at doing a regular, other standard.
They have, you need to change?
Well, it's time material.
Well, we're charging them the one time eight hundred dollars if the mains on their side of the road, twelve hundred dollars if we're putting it under the road, plus time and material. Whatever it is above that. And that goes up to cost.
Yeah.
Let's face it, copper's not fifty cents a foot.
Right.
Nope, nine, ten dollars a foot. So when we're all done, you know, you look at South Haven's bill there and you read down through their bill, that's a water inspection fee of fifty bucks, sewer inspection fee. When they went around, went around, put everything in. Excuse me, when they went around, put everything in, they said, we're here, we'll hook up for X amount of dollars. And that's quite a cheap rate. If not, you're gonna pay five thousand dollars or six thousand, you're gonna pay a lot more money. Now, when people want to hook up, this is what it's gonna cost to hook up. We were doing it for eighty dollars for a hundred years. For a hundred years, for a lot of years.
What's REU? Water says, it says water REUs or REU?
I think there was something in there with material that. Isn't something to do with the use, the usage, and then every, different things had different numbers for that.
Different fees, it's like REU.
Depending on what it was. And I think that's how they, they use that to calculate out their planning number.
Just like their meter costs. They make them pay for a meter. So they can replace that meter at such a late time. Instead, we're paying for the meters.
It's not bad, I guess.
It's taking care of things. We went to that timing material, so we worked behind it. We couldn't put services in for eighty dollars.
No.
We were buying rolls of copper for a hundred and fifty dollars, yet along all the fittings, which was two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. And then time and material for the people doing it and they quit there.
So you lost money every time. Lots of times.
Well, hopefully we made it up in the taxes. Well, it's, they still, it means if we're gonna put water sewer in, they're gonna pay taxes, put a resonant home, commercial building, something like it. I mean, we don't have multi-million dollar homes like South Haven does.
Right.
You know, we're hardly, that's you get two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not trying to speak anything off the perceptive, but I'm sure they're doing the same thing now, so. Plus they're hiring people that have to come in to do this.
Kind of, uh, some kind of fee plus time and material for insulation.
Yep.
The way I see it.
Right.
This is not gonna be a big revenue making thing for us and like you say, you don't want to charge any more than it costs us. So that we encourage people to hook up instead of.
Moving to another town, hooking up.
Yeah, instead of encouraging on their cheek.
Well, we don't, you know, profit's not a dirty word either.
No, I agree.
It'd be nice to come up with something that.
Reason.
Like time and material, that'll grow as time goes on automatically, so you don't have to keep writing a new, uh, schedule all the time, uh, hookup fee.
Well, I agree. I mean, let, let Regina do more homework. You can compare to other cities that we brought up, Decatur, Lawton, Gobles, other areas around here. And do comparison. I mean, you can't compare hookup prices versus South Haven. Like you can't compare hook prices downtown Kalamazoo either. But our rates haven't changed in years and it's time to move with the times, with the rates. All right, moving down the list. Um, there's a chicken permit request.
I know she's on the outskirts of town, but I am really against farm animals in the city limits. Curious.
Yeah, I, I thought we put an ordinance to this already, didn't we?
Your, your ordinance just says that the city council can be petitioned for permission. So this person has almost two acres and she's out on Greenhouse Road, so.
Well, what was that when we were talking about, we can't have any cows, chickens, horses and all that?
We looked at other ordinances from other communities that are, that are trying, that are saying no entirely.
Right.
But no, we didn't do anything with that. We discussed it, but it's still up to the council case by case.
We argued that with Mr. No Tap, he was, Freddie Madlos said it's, it's gonna set a precedence and he said, no, it's a case by case basis, which puts more money in his pocket. But I still say it's a, it's a, uh, they gotta keep bringing it to us, so.
See, I've got neighbors that have got enough land to satisfy the offset requirements. And I don't want them having chickens or goats or anything else next to me.
You said chickens in the city of Kalamazoo.
So is there, is there a motion, um, to accept or reject this?
I'll make a motion to reject the chicken permit request.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion on it now?
The only discussion is that we've pretty much decided that we will not have farm animals in the city limits.
We did a bunch and that was, that was like really against the law to us, but we still did it. After that, we turned down how many chicken requests.
Right. Then what happened to your chicken, your chicken request on Arlington Street, East Arlington Street?
Who was it?
I can't think of the address right now.
They got chickens?
Rooster.
They never came and asked for permission?
Down off of.
By the department?
No, it's East Arlington.
The country level.
Yes.
I don't believe about the bottom one yet.
Yeah, he's, he's built a nice chicken coop out front and he said, I always like to think of the old guy, he used to live there a hundred years, a bunch of years ago. He built a nice little coop out front, cement driveway, it's next to Dan Price's in-laws.
Oh man, Mr. Clicks.
Clicks, Larry Clicks. And then he said he'd move it out back.
Is it the White House or is it the house where Aldo lives? Aldo Olds?
So that's got a chicken coop out there on legs and that was brought up to the council meeting one time.
Right. I don't remember talking about anything about it. I remember we turned one down for here on Division. Right. And I think he had drawings and everything, you know, right across from Mr. Turbot. I don't think anybody from Arlington Street came to us. I know. Because I know I would have never approved that.
Okay.
I know that.
There's a, a motion on table, Ben Second, um, to not allow this. Right, how was it ordered? Can we place red dragon or the motion?
Just motion to reject having chickens in the city.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. The next one is. Is a legal service agreement.
I'm gonna let Tommy explain this one.
We've been, uh. I think that we should follow a community's example, a lot of other communities when it comes to local ordinances by giving our city attorney the authority to prosecute those. Everything under the traffic code, disturbing the peace, assault and batteries. We've been getting a lot of, uh, let's say not so much initiative from prosecutor's office out of South Haven. It's getting frustrating countywide, a lot of the officers and other chiefs have kind of fallen on deaf ears. The benefit to this is it gives the city control of what happens to our misdemeanor cases, a lot of them. Also generates revenue that we currently are not getting. So with this formula that Sterling maybe had put together, we, it has to be a win-win because one, we'll start seeing a portion of the fines that the court assesses. And Sterling will obviously take a portion of that where another city attorney was billing hourly, which is quite excessive. So this situation right here is a win-win for the city. We get revenue that's currently not coming in. And we're able to have a city attorney who can, uh, plead cases out, authorize cases, um, at his discretion. So it gives us better control.
And if I may add too, in, in, uh, I've been doing it for the past three months, you know, just like real charge. You know, just like going and, uh, you know, we get at least a little bit of money.
And with the light, since we've actually taken it out of city hall and had it in the court systems, it's actually been more effective. Because we have the, uh, you know, basically the court, the judge can put you in jail if you don't comply with it, you know, you get a bench warrant if you don't show up to it. And, uh, it'll be this way as well. So we arrest them like drunk driving. They plead guilty or they decide to fight it. Our city attorney will handle it if he authorizes it. And whatever fines are associated with that will come back into the city. And especially these disturbing the peace crimes, you know, that they don't really want to do. We get somebody downtown here creating disturbance, you know, we're in the trailer park, we've had. We arrest them for disturbing the peace and our ordinance exists, it's handled by him and, uh, we get a portion of the fines when it comes back.
So our city attorney would be serving as sort of a prosecutor?
He would be a prosecutor.
Sir, how many cases was typical in a month?
Well, my officers are pretty proactive. We probably, on average, you know, we do about, we were from twenty-five to thirty arrests a month. And a lot of those are original cases. You get somebody beating up somebody down, you know, somewhere or causing disturbance in the street, you want to take action on that. Or you get somebody speeding, you write them on their local ordinance, you know, if you do write the ticket. And all that fines, we get a portion of it. So it's money that we're not seeing right now.
And you obviously recommend that we do this.
I recommend we do, yeah.
Our ordinance do cover that, so we're, we're.
Yeah, all we have, and I think what we should, I know that when I was an officer here before, we did it. But what I think I'm gonna have request is have the city attorney again, have you guys adopt motor vehicle code because all you have to do is adapt resolution. Okay, it's been adopted, so we're good to go.
Well, now I have a little concern about that because I don't want something to come up to where now we're getting this money and now we're getting a little proactive about. Getting down and stopping people.
How do I say this right? It's not all about the money. I mean, your revenue's nice there. I want the city to have control of what happens.
Okay.
You get somebody that is down at the park creating problems.
Right.
You know, and it covers every ordinance where a prosecutor like, yeah, maybe they're not causing any deal. And I'll just take action. At least the city attorney will have the city's interest.
Okay.
And if we lose, he doesn't get paid either?
Pretty much, I mean.
Lose without zip.
So Sterling, what is the formula that was set in there?
Sixty percent.
Sixty forty.
Yeah, and that, that, I, I'm, I've, I've seen it before where attorneys have charged a lot of money and stuff and this is actually a pretty fair formula here.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Do the other attorneys that take this on work on a monthly retainer as Sterling does? Cause we have, we have a retainer with them now, uh, which we all know what that is, I won't go into it. But if, it says here like sixty percent of all fines would be collected for the city prosecution attorneys. So we'd leave us forty percent. Why don't we work out a fifty fifty?
Well, well, here's a, you know, and the cost that associated with that too, nothing comes up, you know, like send out subpoenas and so on and so on. So it's like all the costs I'm absorbing on and stuff.
I know. You've done it for free for three months and we really like that. Now we're giving you fifty percent. This man knows what he's doing.
I was a, I was originally, I was the one who suggested that actually go in his favor. Because there's, I mean, he, there's gonna be cases now, it has to go in, where we arrest somebody and lodge them, okay? When I come in the morning, I'm gonna have to actually call him and I'm gonna have to actually fax over or send over via email a warrant to him. And he's gonna have to review the whole report and say, okay, I think probable cause exists and then authorize the warrant and then I have to go over and have a judge sign it. So he's gonna be doing a lot of extra stuff now.
And he'll still do it even though. And he'll still do it even though the judge dismisses it or any other type of issues?
Well, he's the only one who can dismiss it, or like if there's like some, or maybe probable cause, a judge can usually do it, but usually it's going to be his discretion in the city attorney.
And normally, I mean, the time he can vouch with that too, every time, I always have his, okay, here's what I'm doing, what do you think?
Yeah, absolutely. He's got a pretty good record in court too, so, yeah, I'm comfortable with this.
They have time to absorb this extra one.
Yes, yes.
You want to settle for fifty-fifty?
I never wanted to ask.
I like that idea.
I was actually going to go sixty-fourty, but I thought, let's be fair.
Is there, is there a motion to accept agreement for legal services for the city ordinance prosecution?
I'll make a motion to accept the agreement for legal services for the city ordinance prosecution.
Second. Any more discussion on it? Let's have a roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Alaba?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Houseover?
Yes. Motion heard. Again, now we'll get down to the other section of opportunities for public comments. Please state your name, two minutes.
Everybody gets to talk.
Lucas Kanek, I think some of you know me. The only thing that I, you know, you guys get to do what you want anyways, but as far as the marijuana dispensary thing goes, I don't care one way or another how it's done, but I would think that if the state doesn't limit the amount of licenses, I know you have a little bit of leeway with maybe with actually approving them and whatnot. It's really odd to only approve one and not allow for competition, and I don't care if three of them get together and run under one or whatever. You're eliminating the opportunity for competition, which could stunt growth and, and then bettering themselves as a business down the road. We don't limit any other ones to just one. Not exactly sure why we would do that there. The liquor, they still, it's like a per capita thing, right? But they allow them. So, you know, you have more than one beer and wine permit, why would you limit it to just one? I could see two, you know, so at least you have something to compare against, but I think one is kind of like giving somebody a favor. You're saying, well, we're going to make sure you don't have any competition because we want to make sure you succeed, and that's not the place, I don't think, for the city to do that, but.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other public comments?
I guess I have one question too. The sewer part of that, we've been, Virginia and I discussed a little bit of it. They're going to water the plants. Where's the water going to go that doesn't get used on the plants? Is it going to fall on the floor, go in floor drain?
Well, I can't speak for the other manufacturers. I can only speak for our business plant. And our plants will absorb all the water. They only get so much water a day, and they absorb it. We have no overflow. It's organic. The only, only water that will go out into the system will be regular use water for cleanup and cleaning materials, cleaning pots, cleaning, spraying our walls down, stuff like that. It's organic.
We're worried about the fertilizers and stuff because we can't have that going into the sewer system to go to the sewer.
And we don't, and we don't use that. And our plants, again, there's no runoff. We don't use a flood system or a hy, we're not using a hydroponic system where that water has to be disposed of. I can't speak for anyone else. I can only speak for our plant and how we're going to grow. And so the pot only gets so, so much water a day, and the way our growth is, is that those plants have to dry out because that's what makes the roots stretch. So there's no, no water overflow water. So, and then on the dirt side is the root bomb that's left. We're having a process set in where it separates the roots from the dirt, and we reuse the dirt, we recycle the dirt. And we've already contacted the landfill and the disposal company, and they're willing to take the byproduct from the root and the stems and the leaves into their landfills. So that's our organization. So I can't speak for the other ones, but that's how we're going to grow, so.
Did you guys also have like retainage pond in your facility, or was that the other ones?
That's the other ones. Ours, you know, the way that our site map is set up is we put a retainer pond in if we need it, just so it's on the specs. But talking to Crohn's and he got ahold of
The county.
The county guy that does that, and he said our, our property wouldn't need it. But if the council says we do, we'll put it in.
Control on what Jimmy was asking, and everything gets hauled out of there or taken away? It's all EPA compliant? No EPA compliant, and there's no hazards, no?
I'm the DEQ agent for our company. I was the DEQ agent for Getman, and Getman was a much bigger project. I spent two million dollars getting them straight. We will have no, no compliance problems. We're not going to, we're not going to have any patrolling on our product, on our, on our site. We're not going to have any fertilizers. Ours is an organic grow. So we're going to try to grow green, if you will.
What do you use?
Our stuff is, we have a mixture of vat aguano and squid and marine byproducts, probably.
Do you mix it yourself, or do you buy it from the supplier?
We mix it all ourselves. We buy it, but we, we have a formula that we mix it into a vat, and we use, and the vat's only good for one watering, so it doesn't sit around because it will spoil. It'll smell bad, too. So we mix only enough to supply the plants what they need daily. We water every day so that they only get so much water, again, so there's no burn off, there's no runoff, none of that.
The only runoff would really be the cleaning process where the rooms are cleaned, and then it'll be cleaned with bleach or chlorine.
Yeah, it's a chlorine, bleach mixture is what we clean. The walls, there's no wood in this building. There's no absorbent materials. It's all metal and reinforced fiberglass panels so they can be scrubbed out. It's all stainless steel. It's like a hospital. It's, everything is clean.
Clearer than a hospital closet.
Um, I mean, yes. Yes. I mean, it's, it's, there's no windows in this factory. There's one big door and a man door.
What do you use for insecticide for pests?
We don't. What we use, we have no insecticide. You can't, you know.
Is it one of your?
Well, all your materials have to be tested by a state lab, and when you use insecticides, it's going to be, it, it's what's called systemic. The systemic lives in the plant, okay? And if it tests for that, then you're out a lot of money. So most of our stuff is natural. For example, the, the three main problems you have in growing indoor medical marijuana is mats, believe it or not, spider mites, and regular bugs that, that you might have in the building, for example, crickets. Crickets can actually destroy a crop. So, so there's those controls, but it's nothing on the plant itself. We'll heat the dirt so that, if anyone's familiar with wood pallets, to be able to ship a wood pallet out of this country, it has to be heat treated, and it has to have a stamp on it that says that it's been heat treated with a number that they could track in order for you to put your goods on that skid and ship that skid out of this country. Well, the same thing, and the reason they do that is because it kills any bug that could be in there, and that's how we ended up with the ash bor and all those other bugs that we have that kills our trees. So it's the same process. So when you heat that dirt, it kills everything because all the dirt you buy will always come with some problems. Always. There's no way of getting around it. And the black mold and stuff like that. So you heat treat it, and then you're good to go.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Moving down the list now, board commission appointments correspondence, removal of two housing commission members, Yvonne Beasley and Freddie Sanders.
Right, because the housing commission voted on, in their October meeting to remove these members. It was a conflict of interest and for the HUD recommendations, they needed to get them off or they were going to cut funding, so.
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, I guess I'll make a motion to remove the two housing commission members, Yvonne Beasley and Freddie Sanders due to conflicts of interest.
Support. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next one, we have a appointing of two housing commission members, Connie Mize and Doug Landers. They have to be within the city or not in the city?
Well, Connie Mize lives in the building, so she is going to be the building rep, which is what Freddie Sanders was. And Doug Landers then will be the other seat that Yvonne had. And those were the choices that the housing commission, I think the chair makes one of those, and the director makes the other, and they run it us to appoint them, and then at the next meeting they will then go ahead and let them know that they're.
Can they be on it if they don't live in the city?
That I don't know. I'm not.
I don't think there's a restriction, excuse me, residence restriction.
I don't know.
I couldn't find anything.
Okay. So at this point?
I make a motion to accept Connie Mize and Doug Landers for the two housing commission members.
Second.
Any more discussion on it?
As a recommendation.
Yeah, okay, that's your recommendation.
Well, that's what they want, right?
Yeah.
That's what they want.
That's a command.
Yeah, because they were.
Okay. You made your recommendation. You've got motion to table. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next one is household hazard waste report.
This came from the county, and they did their household hazardous waste collection, and the city used a hundred dollars worth. So we've had some people participate in that collection.
I'd say about their low.
Yeah, we, we had pledged five hundred, I believe, but somebody, somebody's used it anyway, so there was a hundred dollars.
Is this the one in fifth place in South Haven?
This was over in Papa where they collect these.
I know they have one in South Haven, too, do they, this side or something?
I think they do. They do tire collections.
Because I got a lot of paint they're going to get rid of.
Contact the Van Buren Conservation District. I have to print dates and locations around here.
Okay.
It's just for your information.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Moving down the list, next one is a letter from Gerble and Company requested, every time we get an audit, they contact me from a standpoint, am I aware or any questions about anything? So I have just requested for healthcare investigation to the MCL fifteen dot five six three. Healthcare is a pretty difficult situation from a standpoint. Sometimes they even audit you to verify, you show certificates to your wife that you're married to her, your kids' birth certificates and everything else, whether they belong to you or not, or do you have legal custody? So part of our thing is, I requested Gerble, as their normal audit, they come in for a year, thing is, they look into our healthcare. And what they did, they did come out with a finding, and I guess at this point I'll turn it over to our city attorney. And city, thanks.
Well, I did for the letter early this morning, going back first and foremost, I'll say the council really did not get completely legal advice again with, because the law isn't placed in two thousand and twelve, and, and I don't think it's fair to anyone, to Mr. Louder and Jimmy, that three years later, this thing is just going back up again. So I submitted a recommendation up to the council that I would rather reconsider the agreement and to put my, by, by MCL fifteen point five six three.
So right now what you're saying is that we're not complying?
I'm not saying that, that you can't really say, you know, it will be up to, you know, a court, a court to me, in terms of if it gets paid. But I did provide a simple, you know, the language of the MCL, so.
I don't know if these gentlemen are under former employees and they're under contract. They can't change a contract, really.
The contract portion may be, that's why I say, may be deemed invalid in the sense of it's not compliant with excellent state law. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen.
Because we haven't voted on it year after year after year, right?
Correct.
We have to vote on it every year.
Correct. If it's just the eighty-twenty, oh, well, what are we division based on the three options?
We, we got in this, in the Public Refunded Health Insurance Contribution Act of two thousand eleven, it says here in section E that the medical benefit plan does not include benefits provided to individuals retired from a public or a public employee's contributions to fund a use, to a fund used for sole purpose of funding healthcare benefits that are available to the public employee or an elected official upon retirement or separation from service. So how does this even apply to them, I guess, is what I'm asking. We got this. And we, we had a, I mean, because the thing is, the contract goes till they're sixty-five, I believe, and, you know, we've been maintaining, we're on an eighty-twenty policy. I guess I don't see why we're, it's changing. Now, if we want to compare prices, see if we can find a better deal, I can understand that, but I don't understand how we're going to go back and re-sent out a contract or an agreement that we made. I, I don't like doing that, personally. But, I mean, I don't want to be breaking the law, but if we're not breaking the law. I guess I don't really know why we're doing this.
Actually, there's more than section three. You know, the hard cap is section three, which is one choice. Section four is the eighty-twenty, that's your second choice. And then your third choice is, we want to do something else so that you vote. Actually, we've traditionally used the eighty-twenty.
Eighty-twenty.
And that's, we're continuing to, this letter is the hard cap, which is the first choice, and we've never, I've never known the city to use the hard cap choice, so.
Well, I, I.
And that's section three.
I think part of this is too, every year we should be reviewing healthcare, which we're not doing, which we should be doing as a city council.
We review it.
And it should be brought from the city council, too.
Well.
Because as we do that, then we should be looking at the cost we're spending every month or every year and per hard cap for other different options. Because of course, you're not going to, that's kind of like looking at the fox looking at the hen house because you're talking about drone insurance.
Well, we try to keep.
And as a governing body, it's our responsibility.
But you're talking about two bases of contracts. We're not talking.
Yeah, but I'm just, overall, I'm looking at MCL fifteen dot five six three.
Not five six four, which is the eighty-twenty. You, that, that law has nine sections in it, and that's just one of them.
Yeah.
And Steve right now is sixty-two, and his contract is till he's sixty-five, so we got three years in that. Why do we want to, right now, do anything different? We built our general fund, we're moving forward, we're not losing money, we're saving money, and we save money every chance we get, and we do look at the healthcare every year to try to keep prices or costs down, so.
But to make it clear, we're talking about MCL fifteen dot five six three. That's what's called out by Gerble.
Which has nothing to do, and Gerble is not an insurance agent or an attorney, so if you told him about that, he's not looking at the whole law. And I talked to him, he doesn't understand it. He said it, talk to the attorney.
Yeah.
So you're looking at section three, which is not an option that the city has ever chosen. We have chosen section four, which you should be voting on every year, which you haven't been.
Right.
But that's what we're doing. We're not doing this option at all.
Well, I mean, the option for the city council should be any of those sections, which one they apply to and they might go with.
Right, but you voted in the past, and Freddie doesn't remember what year, to do the eighty-twenty, and you should be reaffirming that every year.
Every year, is my thing. We should be reviewing it every year.
That has nothing to do with it.
If, if you'd be clear, if I may undertake, that's why I made it clear in the lit, there are like three, you know, the hard cap, the eighty-twenty, or you can choose whatever plan that the city wants, wants to go for, so.
So part of our thing is, we need to schedule it where we review how much we're paying, and going back, do we continue eighty-twenty? Do we go to the hard cap, or we go to exemption, the requirements of the act, and fund employee healthcare, some other method. That's, that's what we should be doing.
It does get an annual review, though.
When is it normally reviewed?
November, yeah, which would be, will be.
So make it official, we just have to vote on it as a council?
We just try to stay within the budget because it's in our best interest to stay within the budget.
So it's reviewed every November? So my thing is, why aren't we reviewing it every November then?
You could come to the meetings if you'd like, they're during the day.
Yeah, we can change that.
Because I can let you know, it's, well, we meet with the insurance agents, so if you want to come, I'll let you know when we do it.
And we can always schedule a special meeting with the council some year, too.
That's fine.
Right now, for current employees, we need to approve eighty-twenty.
You need to be voting on the eighty-twenty to make it official, which you haven't done.
Let's, let's make that much official. As far as Steve and Jimmy, I don't see any reason to open up their contract. Uh, as far as, uh, Steve and Jimmy, I don't see any reason to open up their contract unless it's jeopardizing our, uh, chances for, uh, grants or, uh, uh, revenue issue.
It is not.
Uh, if it's not, I don't see any reason to try to renegotiate a new contract one, personally.
I make a motion that we vote on the eighty twenty for Jimmy and Steve because they are currently under that contract. It was an agreement we made with them. Uh, if we wanna revisit it for our current employees, that'll be done sometime this month.
I think, I don't think you need to, I think you just, you don't need to vote on theirs at all.
No, theirs is done.
Yeah, theirs is a done deal. What you should be doing is just reaffirming the eighty twenty for the staff that's currently being.
I make a motion that we take a vote of the eighty twenty on the current employees.
All right, sorry, come on in. Any more discussion? I would recommend also that you guys look at the funding amounts. Anytime we vote on money that affects the city, as part of due diligence, understand how much we're spending or not and not open checkbook.
Agreed.
And then, you know, when you do that, you look at the hard cap and see what we're currently paying. I mean, that's our responsibility to at least pay attention to that. Um, there's a reason why the governor did put a hard cap in place for, for guidelines that kinda go by. You know, if we're paying for family, four or five thousand dollars more versus on the hard caps, anytime's it by, if you have thirty employees, forty employees, you're adding up a lot of money that you have to go out there and talk to your constituents while you're gonna go out there and spend that kinda money.
That's true, but you also have to realize if you're paying their salaries less than the surrounding community, they've gotta have some reason to be here.
I agree, and add some stuff.
So you gotta weigh that, it's a balance.
Okay, the motion's been made, let's take a vote.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alman?
Is this eighty twenty?
Yes.
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Householder?
I don't know. Motion passed. All right, moving down the list, city council members' comments. Danny?
Okay. To answer a question that was brought up on the public comment, this may not apply to exactly what was asked, but, uh, in the Benham Parrot Fladium here a couple of months ago, there was a article about, I think it was the city of Rock Claire had accepted, uh, in their industrial park, the position of allowing a grow operation. Uh, upon doing that, that night of, with a lot of investigation and, and everything else, uh, someone from a neighboring town came and made a request to be able to get on the same bandwagon. And, and their solution at that time was to, let's just let us run with the one that we've been working with and voted upon and get that off the ground and running. And then at that point, we will turn around and make a decision as to more dispensaries, or not dispensaries, but more grow operations. Uh, in this case, I don't think it's showing favoritism to anybody, but when we have people that are spending millions of dollars on investing in our city and employment here and tax money here, I think, uh, it's only diligent that we stand behind them and make it work for all of us.
I have a few things. Uh, I'd like to kinda, um, kinda reiterate what Danny was saying as far as Luke's comments. Um, I appreciate what you're saying, Luke. I, I do agree with that, having the two dispensaries for competition. But what Danny says makes sense also because if, if we, you know, we got, this is a, it's a honeymoon period. We don't know what's gonna happen. We've never done this before. This is something new. So I think we need to figure out how this works and how it's gonna work for the city before we start opening up the floodgates, so to speak. So I mean, and, and like Danny said, they're making an investment in our community, so, um, we're invested in them to see how they do. And if everything goes well, then we will all benefit. And, uh, we can discuss the others later. Um, I'd also like to make a remark about the cemetery appearance. Um, looks great. That, that entrance looks great. Um, I don't know if anybody, everybody's seen it, but go by and check it out. It is really nice, you know, having that little area paved that'll help with the water runoff also a little bit. Um, just wanna thank the city hall staff for going out there in the cold weather and doing the Halloween. I saw you guys passing out candy. Um, I came by, I was gonna come back and get some candy, but there's a car behind me. I was just gonna say, big kids, uh, you know, trick or treat too, but, uh, and, uh, just wanna send out a special prayer to Lynn, hope she's recovering well and, uh, hope we get her back soon, so. It's all right.
Hey, Harold.
I talked with Lynn today. Uh, her recovery is going really good. And she's actually progressing faster than even the doctors, uh, thought she would, so. I'm happy that, uh, for her also, I'll get, uh, trying, uh, to be fair about this marijuana thing. We're trying to get at least one dispenser going and, and we can discuss what to do after that.
Steve?
Yeah, city hall door got put in, in the front, looks really good. Looks like they did a good job over the weekend, so, or a weekend, I should say. Good job.
Gina?
Uh, just send prayers to Texas and from Miss Farmer. Make sure, uh, send prayers her way. She continues to have a good recovery. That's all.
Thank you. And I don't know if we can do anything outside. So the front door, can we clean the brick with mure- mure acid? Or is that illegal now to do?
Better products than mure acid. It's a specialty product, only contracted for that.
I mean, the thing is, all of our pictures, we have the city hall. We have that old broken down door, kinda looks like, um.
I'll get you a number.
Uh, city hall above it, and the door looks really nice. And, and the city hall looks really nice above it. And so let's shine up the brick a little bit and then they can, uh, you can show off city hall a bit more. Then we work on the windows and everything else around here. All right? Um, but one thing is too, like I said, we need to just make sure we pay attention to what we, we pay on and everything else. And standard format should be eighty twenty. Um, if anything supersedes the eighty twenty, even with agreements in the past, buddy buddy system or not, it should be a still standard for everyone. Everybody gets the same coverage at eighty twenty. This isn't anything different. You know, they made reasons for that where other people and other companies could not change theirs to a higher limit and had everybody else at different limits. But it should be a standard guys across the board. Otherwise CEOs and everybody else would be doing a lot more difference than same thing with the government. Uh, so those are some of the issues. Still need to make sure, and compliance. Um, looks like the parking lot's looking pretty good for the DDA. Maybe still need to be lined. And I think we have a couple of gentlemen maybe interested in our DDA building. Uh, so hopefully they can bring that up to the DDA and, and the city. So we're moving forward. City's looking good, so we got a lot more work to do and get ready for a bunch of leaves coming down.